Good evening, everyone. This is Robert Stevenson. I am calling the Southwick College Grandville Regional School District School Committee regular meeting to order. Can I get a motion entered in the meeting?
So.
Can I get a show of hands to enter the meeting? The record showed the motion passes seven zero zero. Can I get everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, one little addition on our consent agenda. We had a last minute. Fundraiser added for volleyball. I hope everybody got a chance to see that. Now's your time to say if we need to pull something out. If not, we will move forward and approve that in the items. Warrants. We have some warrants that are going around. If everybody can get those done tonight. Superintendent Willard, do we have anything to add?
We do not.
So we have a number of people here tonight. Thank you, everybody, for attending. We're coming up on our first public comment section. Anyone wishing to make a public comment must appear in person here at this meeting. In-person speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material and must begin by stating their name and address. Total timeline for public comment is fifteen minutes. I'll be keeping track of that. Um, if I feel we need to extend that, I certainly have the opportunity to do that. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Comments may offer such subjective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor against any member of the school community under most circumstances administrative channels or proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. We have a podium there. I'm gonna now open up the floor. If somebody wants to make a public comment, if you could please go to the podium and again state your name and address and we'll give you three minutes to to speak.
Hello, my name is Kelly Glendeton. I'm eleven Salem Road in Southwick, Mass. I am here, which is probably not a surprise, because I've spoke to some members of the school committee and also the principal at the regional school. So I'm here today on behalf of many parents and students from the district. Actually, seventy-three have signed. Um, we would like to address the lack of lunchtime allowed to our seventh and eighth grade students at the regional school. Currently, those students are allowed fifteen minutes of lunch and fifteen minutes of recess. It looks a little deceiving when you look at the lunch schedule that is posted on the school website. It shows second lunch and it says eleven twenty-five to eleven fifty-five. All seventh and eighth grade classrooms. In reality, lunch for seventh graders, or sorry, in reality, from eleven twenty-five to eleven forty, seventh grade students are sent outside to recess while eighth grade students have their fifteen minutes of lunch in the cafeteria. At eleven forty, they switch. Obviously, fifteen minutes to get to the lunchroom, stand in line to purchase lunch and find a seat is not enough. This is the forcing students to not obtain the free lunch provided by the federal government, and some students don't even eat at all. They will tell you they have no time. They are told to throw away food after their fifteen minutes. So we're wasting quite a bit of the federal money that's been given to us so our kids can have free lunches. Eating this fast is not safe, obviously, and has the chances for choking, and it is not healthy as it can lead to eating disorders. The CDC and the Department of Education both recommend at least twenty minutes of seated time for lunch. That does not include purchasing lunch, getting to the lunchroom, washing hands. I've attached copies from the CDC and the Department of Education that show these recommendations. Our surrounding towns and cities all follow these guidelines. Westfield has twenty-five minutes, Springfield thirty, eighty twenty-five, West Springfield thirty. Pre-COVID, Southwick had seven and eighth grade lunch together with a full thirty minutes and the option to go outside if they choose. Currently, grades nine through twelve have thirty minutes. I emailed the regional school principal, Serena Shorter, and Superintendent Willard. I had emailed previously last year about this issue and did not hear back from Superintendent Willard. Ms. Shorter did call me and we spoke. She was able to confirm that, yes, seventh and eighth grade only have fifteen minutes to eat. Said on occasion they will make exceptions for individuals that may require more time. Ms. Shorter also stated that the reason seventh and eighth are separated and have fifteen-minute lunches is mostly defensive behavior. Says students only need ten minutes to eat and then they are misbehaving. She stated they cannot handle the unstructured time of lunch and recess. Further, they are trying to, they try to shorten the recess time by delaying students in the hall because they have behavior, behavior issues at recess as well. And Ms. Shorter also stated that the school is looking into shortening the lunchtime for grades nine to twelve, who currently have a thirty-minute lunch together. This lunch and recess time is the only time our students have to relax and we are taking that away from them. Staff in grades nine through twelve have thirty minutes to eat, sit, talk, and go outside as they choose. We have taken that away from our middle school students. We've also taken away all their recess structures. Their recess consists of a patch of grass in the front of the building. There are no basketball hoops, no bars, not even a bench. So we're forcing our kids to eat fifteen minutes and then stand on a patch of grass outside. In less than a week, I obtained the names and addresses of seventy-three parents in our district who would like to see our children have their thirty minutes of lunch back. On that list are two district staff members who are brave enough to stand up for their children. One of them is the health teacher at Powder Mill Middle School, who says fifteen minutes is not healthy or safe. Moving back to a thirty-minute lunch would not only benefit the students, it would benefit the staff. Seventh and eighth grade kids are eleven, twelve, thirteen years old. They need the break. They need the socializations and they need the nutrition to come back and be focused to learn.
Ms. Glendeton, your three minutes are up. If you can wrap up, please, sir.
I have letters from several students, so I suppose you don't want to.
You can certainly, you can certainly submit that to us. If you would like, that way all of that information can get entered into.
I'm sorry, you said that we could, I could speak. I mean, I could read the letters from the children when we spoke.
I, I said.
You said you could extend the time, so I could read the letters.
I can extend the time for public comments, but every person that comes to speak gets three minutes.
Okay, so you told me that I heard the letter from the students, so.
No, I suggested that you have the students come so that they.
Well, no, they honestly didn't want to come because they were afraid of reading the comments.
Okay. You, you can submit that information. You can certainly get it onto the administration so they can see the letter and we'll have that entered into the minutes. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, Danielle Sullivan, Woodland Ridge in Southwick. I'm just here mainly to speak for the seniors at the high school. Um, regarding the painting, the parking lot painting. Um, they're super excited about it. Like, everybody was looking forward to this. It's always been like a big thing for them to, for them to look forward to. Um, now I guess there are some new rules set in place. They're only allowed to use four colors: yellow, green, white, black. My issue with that is how are they able to express themselves? They can't have any other colors, no rainbows, no sunshine, no college, like the college, you know, mascots they may be attending in, after they graduate. Um, their football teams or, excuse me, sports teams, they can't represent themselves, who they are as individual. They can't express themselves. The whole point of painting their parking spot was to make it their own and as an individual of who they are and, you know, who they represent as a person. So my daughter in particular, she doesn't want to do it anymore. It's taken the fun out of everything. I understand the fact that what they're planning on painting does need some kind of approval. Obviously, it needs to be appropriate, school-appropriate, but I feel as though limiting it to four colors, it's not fun anymore. Like, they can't, they can't express themselves with yellow, black, white, um, and green. I mean, I get it, school colors. I mean, I see, I guess, the point of it, but it's taking the fun out of it. Um, COVID kind of ruined their freshman year coming into high school, and I feel like this is just something that they should be able to let them do, use all the colors of the rainbow, express themselves as people, individuals, how they want in a appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you. That is on our agenda today. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, well, yes, sir. You're gonna, you're gonna get a chance to present when, when we bring up this topic here in a couple of seconds. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much. Um, all right, now, as usually is Bill, our most exciting three minutes or more of our meeting. Do an advisory report. You're up.
It might be a little longer this time because although my apprentice could not be here tonight, I have been sent a short, like, profile for me to read. So her name is Magnolia Dickinson, and she is an eleventh-grade student athlete at SRS. She's played field hockey for the school since last year and is currently a JV captain, and she is also in the Connections Club and has been for the past three years where she has learned how to be a great peer advocate and work on making the school a more welcoming, safe space. She is hoping to participate in the school's mock trial once that starts up in November, and she has also recently been accepted into the Hampton County, County District Attorney's Youth Advisory Board, where she will participate in volunteer work, internet safety, and social media information presentations at elementary schools and to parents, and the Stock this word event at the Basketball Hall of Fame, same event we had at our school this past spring. And she will also be researching and presenting information on teenage addiction and its various forms at the Annual Youth Conference Event in May. She has been on the high honor roll since seventh grade and takes her academics very seriously. She likes to take more social studies classes and is interested in studying history, criminology, pre-law slash legal studies in college. She's also participated in the Powder Mill School STEM Week for the past two years, among other volunteer work. And finally, she wanted me to add, she wants to be very well-versed in what's happening at the school and in her community, and therefore she wants to work on making positive changes in her school that will make it a better place. Being on this committee means she's representing her fellow peers and being a strong voice slash advocate for them, and therefore she cannot wait to get to work.
Fantastic. You got anything else for us?
Oh, I do. That was the main event, but we gotta.
She sent you a paragraph and you guys, and you have post-its?
Yeah. I'm not proud. Good, good. But besides that, homecoming has recently, it was in October, but it's now going to be on November fourth. And we also at the school, we had our, as I mentioned earlier, we had our additions for the fall play, which will be PUPs. And the callbacks will be next Tuesday, and then we'll find out the cast soon enough, and we'll get to work.
So we'll find out where you stand by, by your next meeting.
I hope so, unless they really delay on, if they like to, we will not. And finally, senior pictures, they were done over the summer, but in case anyone missed them, last call is tomorrow. So. Oh, no, I actually, I have one more thing. I forgot about that as well. Southwick made last year for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year met the MIAA Sportsmanship Honor Roll, which means that no student or coach was disqualified during the entire school year. So this is for specifically for the draft, but I doubt we're gonna get disqualified. I mean, it was last year, so this is good.
We get a banner for that, right? For MIAA?
Yes.
Have you got the nod?
Yes.
I think there's a banner. That's awesome. Fantastic. That's good. Anything else? Are we good? No more?
We're good this time, I saw.
You're good?
I think I ran out of post-it notes, so we're.
Sounds good. All right, educational presentation. First up is class of twenty-four parking lot painting proposal. You're up. What do we need to pass on to, oh, perfect.
Hello, everyone. My name is Max Taren. I am the president of the class of twenty-twenty-four. To be fine man, us handing out these papers to you is the vice president, before we send it off. And.
I'm the class secretary. My name is Miranda Michael.
I'm Valerie Chu. I'm the secretary.
So, uh, we appreciate the opportunity of giving us today, coming into this meeting. Uh, our proposal um is here to express to you that the Southwick Regional School of class, of the class twenty-four hopes to continue an annual senior class tradition of painting their respective student parking spaces. We propose a plan for senior parking that's tragically achieved with desired spirit of our class while adhering to the following. Student parking space designs will be submitted to the administration for approval on or before September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Paint day is October first and ninth, ten to three P M. Over. This year, we encourage seniors to paint what describes you as a person. A recent survey given to the senior class has indicated that at least thirty-four students are now interested in painting their parking spots thanks to this meeting that you gave to discuss our desires, I guess. Seniors will be allowed to be creative and respectfully expressive, sensitive to religious and political topics. We really do want to watch out for them. Um, all widely available paint colors are permitted on the student parking spot. Uh, paintbrushes, rollers, paint, and any other supplies must be acquired by the student self. Uh, the senior class officers and members of class of twenty-twenty-four spent eight hours priming previously painted parking spots, and this cost their class approximately seven hundred dollars thus far. So it would really be appreciated if you would give a second to consider a proposal. The self of class of twenty-twenty-four thanks you for your time and patience in hearing. Thank you.
Max, I got a couple of questions for you guys.
Sure.
Um. I got, this was brought to my attention on Friday morning um, that there were a number of concerned graduates about the proposed option that was brought forward during our public comment. Um, this is a very different proposal, which I like. Um, for those of you that were here at the meeting, I know two years ago when we started this, Mr. Cuskatelli came in and made a similar proposal. The point was, we wanted to give the seniors an opportunity to express themselves. They were purchasing a parking spot, and we wanted to give them the ability to put themselves on their parking spot as long as the, the designs were tasteful.
Yeah.
Um, just as you expressed, no political symbols. We didn't want to have any discriminatory issues on there, and in order to do that, the vice principal would clear those, those, those designs. How did we get to where we were last Friday and had only four or five colors? Was that what you guys came up with?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Not quite sure how we got to this point. Um, it's not really for me to say. I can speak on this.
Sure.
So this proposal to use the Rams belong theme.
Yeah.
Given with the school colors, white, green, yellow, black, then gray.
Yeah.
Was mainly proposed by Mr. Jasek, the new assistant principal.
Okay.
So when he came in, he sent us all an email with our two advisors here during the summer that this is the new theme we would be using on our parking lot. So as far as I can tell, that was his idea.
Okay. I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it might be something that the school wants to do in addition to maybe your parking lot theme. Maybe they find a couple of parking spots and get some of the artists and, and do some Rams belong paintings on the, that's fine. But what we approved two years ago was specifically what, basically what you guys presented here today. Um, is that we want to make sure, we wanted to make sure that the class had the opportunity to express themselves. There were no limitations put on what designs were going to be on there other than they needed to be tasteful. Um, it's a little disappointing that that looks like it might have got a little miscommunication there, but this is why we're here tonight, to try to hopefully get this rectified and clarified for everybody. Um, does anybody else have any questions?
I just want to clarify something. Um, I just want to apologize for any miscommunication. I think it came from maybe my end. I, in my recollection, thought that last year they blanketed approved parking um, on the school parking lot as we'd have to come back every single year. Um, I did go back into the minutes. Rob did, Chairman Stevenson did suggest it last year. Um, remember, Tatchy just said, I wish they would come every year for approval, but we need to come earlier. So, um, so class officers, if you're thinking about it, can you share with the next year's senior class officers to come in like June, like near the end of the year, to make this proposal so it's something that the kids could probably do even before school starts? Um, because it does need annual approval. And in my recollection, I thought we had straight approval. So that wasn't a Ms. Shorter decision. That, that was on. So I apologize for the confusion on.
Yeah, we'll get this fixed up. Um, it's, uh, we can certainly discuss it as a committee. I mean, there's, there's options of potentially making this a policy so that I don't know, we, we can, we'll, we'll discuss that, whether we can make this a little easier on you guys. Ideally, from my perspective, and I'll speak about my own thoughts right now. This is the way that we approved it two years ago. This is the way I would like to see it done. Um, if we put it in a policy, there can be no sort of misunderstanding or misclarification so that ideally what I want to be able to, is people in seventh and eighth grade have a clear understanding of what they're going to be able to do once they're a senior here. Um, I know that we've had a lot of people upset in your class about this, so I'm glad we were able to get on top of this. I'm glad you guys were here to make this proposal today. Um, we're gonna be voting on this here in the next fifteen, twenty minutes. Um, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve this, but we'll see. So hang on to your seats. We'll have a vote here shortly. Is there anything else you guys want to say? I'll take a second. Okay. Does anybody else have any other?
No, there's no color limit.
No color. That's not what they're proposing.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, how, if I remember correctly, there's like from leftover from last year, there were quite a few kids that did this last year, but there were also quite a few plain empty spaces. Um, what is the reason for reprimaring? Because it is a cost to you guys. What is the reason for reprimaring everything all over again rather than just, you know, utilizing the empty spaces that are already available?
The primer must be applied before the regular paints, whether it's oil-based or water-based. The primer needs to be applied before that, just that was, that was proposed by custodians.
So that the paint can set properly.
So hang on one second. That's not in here. We, we, I think we want to make sure that's added. The one thing that we did talk about two years ago is we wanted this to be latex paint, um, not oil-based so that it was if the, the plan two years ago was at the end of the year to power wash the dang things off so that you don't necessarily, you could, you'd have to prime them again, but you could theoretically with latex paint power wash them off. We talked about this last week. The only thing we worried about is, why do we want seniors to have power washers up there? We don't want anybody to get hurt. Um, so the point is, I think the, the plan was the junior class will become the senior class next year at the end of the year. Prime it, get it all ready so that you guys can paint and have these things done before school even starts. Um, and that's, I'm certainly with Superintendent Willard about having the next class, when do they do class, um, elections? Like at the end of the last school year. Okay, is it done relative, early enough that they could come to us before the school year's over?
That's usually.
Yeah, um, it sounds to junior class advisor.
I'm always just wondering.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to look more closely. I mean, it's possible. Um, we just would have to be sure elections are done, and but then the next piece is if you have newly elected officers.
Yeah.
They're gonna need to meet and make decisions about what they want to propose.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the timeline.
This, this is why I'm kind of thinking it might be simpler. If we just make it into a policy, that way nobody has to come. We want to make this where you guys have an opportunity to express yourself. I don't want to box anybody into what they can or can't do on that parking spot and with the exception of, listen, all those designs need to get cleared.
To probably have a clear procedural time.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much.
You guys have fun.
All right, next up, international travel proposal, field trip to Spain. Mrs. Mahoney. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Fantastic. What do you got? You can, there's a seat right up there by Mr. Fox. Oh, I forgot. Apologize, Mr. Fox. I want to officially welcome Mr. Fox to our school committee. We talked in, uh, we talked in executive, so kind of did that. So we're very happy to have you join our board. We're, um, excited here to have you with us. I think you're gonna bring a lot of valuable experience and all the things that we've got going on. Um, it's certainly gonna be a great happy new year. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
All right, Mrs. Mahoney.
So.
Talk to Spain.
Yes, my biannual plea to, um, allow me to continue, um, taking students abroad. Um, you know, we had a really, despite the fact that we ended up going to Panama and not Peru, like we initially um, wanted, it worked out to be an amazing trip. Um, you know, it was a smaller group because a lot of people, you know, made some different decisions and, you know, Panama wasn't necessarily their top choice, but the students that did go, we had a wonderful time. And so it is something that I always feel like, you know, as much work as it is, it is definitely worthwhile. The students really get so much out of it, hearing them speak Spanish, hearing them, you know, really trying and, you know, and just the camaraderie that's built from among the students that actually, you know, take advantage of that. It's just really to me important. But this trip, um, it's very similar to trips I've done in the past. It's, um, this one is to Spain. Uh, we fly into, fly in and out of Madrid in this case, um, and then head to, um, under Luthia, which is in the southern part of Spain. Um, it's, I like this trip. I, I picked this particular tour because um, it's not a whole lot, believe it or not, it's not a whole lot of traveling, so we get to see a lot of the country. It's like five or six cities. Um, and, uh, you know, we're not spending like whole entire day on a bus. Like, some of the tours that I've done, you know, we, we, you know, it's a lot of time just moving from place to place. This one is, you know, okay, we're here and we're gonna, you know, do day trips from, you know, certain places. So it's kind of a jammed-packed tour. Um, you know, in a good way because it's not, you know, a lot of travel, but they get to see a lot and experience a lot of that culture.
Very good.
Yes.
Do you want to send a little bit of a timeline issue, which is why we brought you in tonight?
Yes, because, well, I mean, like all travel stuff that, you know, was, you know, slammed with the COVID and all that stuff. You know, their window of making these trips happen is a lot tighter. They don't necessarily want to offer like the huge discounts that they used to. So, um, that's the, it's like really tight window. So October first, not only do they have a two-hundred-dollar discount that's about to expire, but the price of the trip goes up another hundred dollars. So we're talking about a three-hundred-dollar difference between like literally now and October first.
And the trip total is?
So the trip total right now is, well, it says here that it's forty-one hundred, but yeah, I know. It, but it is actually right now two-hundred dollars less than that. So it'd be thirty-nine, twenty-nine. Okay, um, yeah, it is. But, well, this time, this time around, I, the price does include the insurance. Sometimes I don't have them included in insurance. So in this case, I mean, if students really wanted to opt out of the insurance, but I mean, I could have made that price look a lot less, you know, to, you know, it would have looked more like thirty-seven hundred, you know, and change, and then.
That's a.
Right, well, anyway.
Like, people can vote now.
I know, I know. And then, but then like when people then actually like, so then it like, then you add the insurance and that's a hundred ninety dollars and then boom, you're right there. So I mean, just to be completely transparent, I figured to include that if somebody really wanted to opt out of the insurance and not spend that, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, but they can do that if they choose.
Um. Question I have.
Yes.
Also, we're also gonna do a little bit different here tonight where we're looking at voting on this. Normally what we do is we listen to a proposal like this. Have a little bit of time to think about it, and then we vote on it at the next meet, meeting. I have no problem voting on it tonight.
Thank you.
Um, my question is, is when did you determine or decide that you wanted to go to Spain? Was it August? Was it April? Was it?
Well, usually what happens in, or what I've done in the past prior to COVID was that, um, you know, I travel every other year because Janet Grunwell does the, the year, the off-year, said I don't travel. And I had always done like one, one of those cycles I would do Spain and one I would do Latin America. So because I did Latin America last time, like that's why I would offer Spain this time.
The, the only reason I'm asking is from a, a timeline perspective, like we're talking with the, we're talking with the kids about proposals for parking lots. If you know this early on, if you, I would, I would assume you're gonna run into these timelines going forward.
Right.
Would it be easier to come to this meeting at the end of, like, we put you on in June?
Sure.
That way you can propose it, we approve it at the end of June. That way you've got the whole summer. You can, you can, you can advertise it. That way the kids have lots of time to figure out what plan you're looking to do.
Right.
And they have every opportunity to meet those deadlines so that they can get it as cheap as possible. Does that make sense?
It does. You know, the, the thing with that, though, that I also want to be sensitive is that, you know, Janet's still trying to recruit her trip for this coming spring, so I don't want to step on. You know, Janet's still trying to recruit her trip for this coming spring, so I don't want to step on her toes by, you know, because I mean, there is, you know. You know. I, I just want to make sure that her trip has what they need and things like that. So that's why we've always done it this way. I didn't realize the company would be so tight there.
No, and I think, what I was gonna ask Principal Shorter is that if we could pass on to Mrs. Grunwald, that. If she could come. June.
Right.
And that way they're ahead of the game. I don't want you guys to run into a situation where you're missing deadlines because of our schedule in September.
Could these stores already be like set up that early in advance?
Yes, I mean, they could, it could be, you know, I mean, you know, I think that Janet and I both have such a relationship with this company. I mean, we've been. Traveling with EF since what, two thousand eight, I think was my first trip with them, and, you know, so I mean.
If it doesn't work, let us know. We can always put you on the agenda for the retreat, because that's the reason August, we could have you in for that, and we vote on it at the first school committee meeting. I'm just throwing that out there, as, as it might be an easier option for you guys, just so that you've got more time, and you don't feel like you're under the gun.
I appreciate that. I know that EF said that the, the price increase, they can't play with. But they're willing to give me a little bit of time on the discount, so I might be able to push that window to offer that hundred dollar, or the two hundred dollar discount.
You're saying if you know early, that a lot more time for them.
I understand. Yep, no, that makes sense.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one up, an Open SciEd Middle School Implementation Support Grant, Mrs. Solder.
Oh.
Doctor Solder, sorry about that.
Um, hi, according to school committee policy, anytime I apply for a grant and actually get it. I come to you guys and you approve me, I have to use the money, to spend the money. So I applied for a grant in May for Open SciEd, which might sound familiar to you. I've been talking a little bit about some of the shifts that we're making to our science instruction towards a storyline phenomenon-based coach.
I'm running into everybody tonight.
This particular grant was available to districts that were in their second year of implementation, that weren't eligible for any other grants, but it was to defray the cost of. A lot of the stuff that comes along with it. It's a very robust program, very hands-on, and there's a lot of things that come. In consumable kits that we purchase for the curriculum. And so they have actually awarded us sixty seven thousand four hundred dollars. Sixty five thousand dollars of that, I had earmarked for consumable kits and the exploration of a possible digital platform. This is an open source curriculum, but there's a lot of. Things to organize. There's also some potential of being able to track some data if we take the assessments online. It's an easy way to, to quickly look and see how the kids are doing. And then I also earmarked two thousand five hundred dollars for stipends for summer work. Some of that's already happened, and I've just paid it from other. But we'll do the switcheroo if you guys approve it. But that's for, it's a, it's a new curriculum, as I said, there's a lot of pieces to it. So after teaching it for a year, the teachers really felt like they could use some time to sit together. Look things over and think it through before they go into year two, and I imagine we'll want to do the same thing. I can also use some of that money for professional development ongoing if we need it as well. I, I. Really overestimated how much the digital platform was gonna cost, and so I think I'm gonna probably be able to move some of that sixty five thousand. For the supplies and, and the online platform to more, some, some more professional development. So that's the grant, and it's, if you guys approve the use, we'll get started with spending it on, on those items. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Good job. The digital platform is there, is the, the teacher platform and the student platform, are they two separate platforms? And if so, are there two separate expenses that go with that?
No, it's one, and it goes by, the ones that we've looked at, we've looked at three, they're by, they're priced by student license. And it's, there's both the teacher materials and the student-facing materials. There's like three or four different ones. I don't, I don't know how much detail I went into the curriculum or how much anybody really cares. Like, this is kind of my thing, so I get excited about it, but I recognize that not everybody. Um, but the open source curriculum, the platforms themselves, a lot of that stuff is. Is, are things that they have available to them now, but if we do it through the digital platform, it's just a little bit more user-friendly. There's a lot of videos that they have to dig around for that are like right there for them. And it's a, a lot of professional development builds into that stuff, the teachers as well, like a lot of, you know. Helping them understand the background of the science and where they're going with the thing as well.
So is, does Open SciEd or a different organism provide professional development? For, for the teachers, both for new teachers newly implementing it. As well as like when you're in year one, two, three, as you're moving on?
Yeah, so Open SciEd was actually developed with Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They were one of the partners that developed the curriculum. And so they are. I, I'm so excited to talk about something else. What, tell me your question again, you know.
So professional development, is there professional development that?
Yes, so, so it was developed by DSE, and they have three or four different contracted vendors, which can provide the materials and the supplies. And can provide the professional development. We've been working with Worcester Pyley Technic Institute for our professional development up to this point. They are one of the contracted vendors. I mean, we really liked them, and we, there were a couple of others that didn't get us, as rave reviews. Which is what I was thinking. I'm so sorry I lost track of your question. I think I've answered it now.
Yes, yes. And I know nobody else cares, so I would be happy. Hear everything that you have to share, and I, I actually love to see the platform, and I'd love to see somewhat that, you know, this, this looks like.
Yeah, I'm excited to share. We're, we're gonna experiment a little bit with a couple of different ones this year.
Awesome. Yeah, no, I would be happy to, to see here. And that uses the raw chicken and. Reusables, would you some pieces again, versus having some money for like raw chicken?
Yeah, so like if, if we bought microscopes or something like that, those are reusable, but there is a unit that they dissect.
I've heard soundbouts every year.
I used to have a classroom right next to a science teacher, and they had all kinds of gross things in the refrigerator, and you're not even gonna go.
So again, this is some, this was something we were looking at, you were looking at anyway, right? And applied for the grant. Got the grant. So this is sixty seven, sixty five, sixty seven thousand dollars that. We're not gonna have to add to the budget, right?
Yeah, we would have wanted to pay for it anyways, yeah, for things that we had already committed to doing, but now we have some additional funding. And I'm just.
So that helps, so sixty seven thousand is a good.
Yeah, and I did just apply for two more, uh, last week, I applied for two more. I think the Department of Ed is also trying to burn through their Easter grant money. Before they are done with it. So there's a lot of things that are dropping now for this year, so. I may be hopefully coming back to you next month with more for ELA or now.
Fantastic. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tramell, Innovation Career Pathway Support Grant. Everybody's getting grants.
Yeah. This, I'll go back very quickly, eighteen months when the regional school was, was looking at. The opportunities that we're providing our students, and we were looking at chapter seventy four programs, or. The number of students that were looking into those programs. And we were really directed and guided by Mass Hire and, and the Department of Ed to look into these innovative pathways programs. We had a number of. Things already in place at the school, our courses, the rigor that we had in the courses, and our ELE program that this is. Marjada has run for a number of years. And so partnering them is really what Innovative Pathways is all about, providing courses and providing internships. That work together with a mentor, with counseling involved, that can provide some. Accreditations or certificates to students upon, upon graduation. So last year we were granted ten thousand dollars, I think. Remember, I think you're right here, to kind of look into what pathways that we could pursue. And promote and look into, and we were granted IT and health careers. So we did a lot of work around it and, and looking at our courses and curriculum materials and, and the resources that were available for our students. And this year we applied Principal Shorter and Mr. Tagliari up at the regional school. We applied for a seventy five thousand dollar Innovative Pathways Grant that we were, we have been awarded. And so like Dr. Sullivan, I'm here to present it to accept this seventy five thousand dollars. Which we would use a large chunk of it, forty thousand dollars to support salary. For the, the ELE coordinator. Around ten. Around ten thousand for.
E-shirt, right?
No.
Oh, she got pulled out?
Ten thousand we would use towards curriculum resources or in these course areas. Around ten thousand for promotional materials. And then. Around seventy five hundred for stipends. And another seventy five hundred for field trips certifications and accreditation sets students can earn upon completion of through a pathway program. So we are still in the initial phase of it. Next year will be our first class. But we hope that each and every year, we're gonna be able to provide. Courses and certi- certi- certificate, certificates, accreditations. Internship programs for the students and grow the innovative pathway programs into other areas as, as the students matriculate, so.
Is it two new classes, IT and?
So IT is a pathway, so we would be looking at some courses in there, and health careers is the other pathway.
So is this grant a, a one-year grant?
The one-year grant, we have noticed that there have been. A, a number of communities that have gotten it for a few years in a row.
Okay.
Innovative pathways is not that old, four or five years old, four or five years old, so. Schools that have gotten in early seem to be reaping some of the benefits that the state is trying to.
Able to reapply and get it again for future years.
Yes, before the push.
And then, and then once it becomes established, then this then goes into our budget, I assume?
Well, really, she's already, the, the. The faculty that we have attached to this already, is already in the budget, so we wouldn't need to be, even if the grant ran out. It's still in the budget. We would be looking at maybe that forty thousand that we'd be putting towards this, using in some other degraded ways. This year and, and maybe the next few years.
Okay. Awesome.
You're good.
Just one more question. What, with the certificate, that would be what the children get?
Yeah, yeah, so it's some of the IT pathways, there's even a number of IT pathways that you could, you could have within that umbrella. You could be certified in cybersecurity. You get, like, depending on the courses that Mrs. Trapp's taught through COVID HS, different programs. You can get some different certifications coming out of high school, the college job you're going into. In the health careers, I mean, you could get certified in CPR. Some EMT courses in that way as well. So it's really partnering courses with some hands-on experiences. And internships that lead to something tangible for the students at the end of, of their four years. In addition to the diploma and putting on your application, a internship.
Any other questions, Mr. Tramell? All right, perfect, thank you very much. Superintendent Willard.
Okay, so I gave you my goals, I'll briefly just go through them. Goal one is the same as they had last year, because it's our student learning goal, our third, third year on our Science of Reading Initiative. So it's almost identical to what I presented last year. And if we continue with year four, it'll be the same goal again. Goal two is really a big part of my job, especially since we have two, not two new administrators. But two new administrators in their roles this year at building principles. It's my job to support and to mentor them, and I really want them to create goals. That are realistic, and I don't, I'm not the type of person who wants twenty seven goals. I want three real goals. I like things focused. I like, you know, to have that through line. I want you to know what you're doing every day and what your purpose is every day when you go in. So that we're having unified discussions in all three of our schools. So I've already set up emails to the administrators. I said I'm presenting my goals today. I will send them out to you, and I'd like theirs to be set up very similar to mine. It's really important about using. Goals, about using data in real time. We're really getting much better at that, because it really helps us inform our instruction. And to inform student learning, and data was not something that we really used a lot when I first started here. And Jenny and I, it's been really. Something we've been pushing since our first year together, almost eight years ago, about using data, using data, using data. And we're finally getting to a place where people are embracing it, and they're not scared of it, because it's not something to fear. It's something to look at and say, okay, this is what I need to focus on now. And this is how I can get my students from here to here, and not every student needs the same thing. Data tells us what we need. If everybody went to the doctor and the doctor gave everybody the same diagnosis. You wouldn't go back to that doctor. Not all kids need the same thing. Data diagnoses our kids, and that's what the data does. That we give them what they need in our classrooms. So we do finally have benchmark assessments. We meet with our administrators, we're gonna be setting up some MCAS meetings with them. And we're gonna be presenting some data meetings for you, the school committee. The third one is similar to the one that we had last year about the policy work. Need to go through that, that's pretty self-evident.
Ongoing.
What?
Ongoing.
Ongoing. Goal four is what I'm pretty excited about this year. There's been a lot of talk about really working with the town leaders on. The school budget, our school budget is so complicated, and it's not like. We can just cut here or cut here because we have so many financial demands, the timeline of when we have to have our budget in. This budget season is going to be extremely difficult. I think there's, there's an article in the paper, our SR funding is running out. Our vocational out-of-district tuitions continue to go up. And our special ed and the needs of our children continue to rise. These are things that are completely out of our control. The news is, we had twenty five new school choice students this year. But this is gonna be a real tough budget season, and I don't want to spring it on people in March. I want to work with the towns. Financial people, go over the budget, keep them involved, lock step throughout the course of the year. And let them know what we're looking at and what we're hearing from Boston. We did have a great meeting today with Director of Affairs Anne Goby of Rural Affairs from. The Department of Government, and it's a newly created position by Governor Healy. And her job is to really focus on the needs of rural schools. Because we heard about the SOA for years and years and years. The SOA, we get nothing from the Student Opportunity Act. We're in a whole harmless district. Only thing we get is the per pupil, which was either thirty dollars and they upped it to sixty dollars. All of our increases come on the back of our three towns. It's great that we're getting these grants. But we don't know we have these grants until now. We can't base our budgets. So our, the school budget is really difficult. Which is why we really try to offset it with our, try to keep our E and D as high as we possibly can. And try to keep our school choice numbers really robust in that, so that we can help offset the budget with our district funds. But I really want to work closely with towns and go to some FinCom meetings and have people ask the tough questions way before budget season. So that. No one's caught off guard. And so that's my fourth goal this year.
I think that's great, because it, because obviously there was some concerns brought up about looking at our budgets and. Whether they want to vote for it or not, and I think the challenge is that they just don't understand. From a discretionary perspective, I mean, we, our budget can only get so small. With the Chapter Seventy Fund and, and the minimal local contribution and the, the amount that we have to spend, if we're under that. We have to add it to the following year budget, so there's only so much money, actually, we have to bring to the towns that are discretionary. And that is, it's a tricky process to understand all of that, so I think this is a great idea.
And it is complicated, like net school spending.
Yeah.
It's like, if you don't spend that much, they're gonna say, well.
You have to do it.
You gotta do it next year. So there's no escaping, and we don't set net school spending, that's set for us by the, you know, when it comes out from the state. So, but, but I, I think it's great that we have people who are really interested. And I, I credit Russ Fox for one of them, when he said, what's this rural schooling? And it was like this one-time thing. And then we got it another year, but it's always in the supplemental budget. So I said to Director Goby today, I said, this is great that we get this money. We can't use it when we're budgeting. But after getting it for a few years, ours, this was our second year, we, yes, our second year, we did put in. A little bit to offset an additional revenue where we put our grant money. And we also up our transportation reimbursement. Um and we also up our transportation reimbursement greater than what the cherry sheet says because we do anticipate it. So we do follow the trends, we put our budget together, but it's always a risk, but it's a risk. So. We do our best.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright policies, we don't have anything to report. We've got our first meeting in November, Aaron.
Yeah.
Okay. Um I think we may, you won't add it to that meeting, but I think we need to add to our list for the year. Our little paint.
Yes, we do.
We can, we can put something together and then we can.
And we could also be the third member.
Yeah, we, we, we'll get, we'll get to that when we get to subcommittees, but yeah, we're down a member because with Pat um. So in the next. Five minutes, we'll bring up the subcommittees and liaisons if anybody wants to. Jump on board with Pam and I, Board Mayor, we've got. Visits and meetings with Liz Lefond to finish our project hopefully this year.
Big project.
Um so, yeah. Alright, action items, Superintendent Miller.
Move to approve consent agenda items as listed above recommended.
So moved.
Can we get a show of hands to approve the consent agenda? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Southwood Regional School class of twenty twenty-four parking lot painting proposal for the twenty-three twenty-four school year recommended. So moved.
Any questions, comments on this? The only thing I would say that we just need to add is the latex paint item on there that we want to have that because I know that was in. The original request. We don't want oil-based painting on the parking lot. Anybody have any other questions? Can I get a show of hands to approve the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the S R S International Trip. Move to approve S R S International Travel Proposal Field Trip to Spain, seventeen through twenty-six, twenty twenty-five recommended. So moved.
Any questions on this? Make a show of hands to accept the motion. Right, Rock to Spain. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Open Sided Middle School Implementation Support Grant and Expenditures as outlined in the terms of the G R A recommended. So.
Any questions on this item? Make it a show of hands to accept the motion. Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the Innovative Career Pathway Support Grant and Expenditures as outlined in the terms of the G R A recommended. So.
Questions? I'm getting all the grants, guys. Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to appoint Daniel Lepchki as the official voting delegate to the twenty-three twenty-four Mass Annual Meeting recommended. So moved. I seconded.
Ted, I know you said you want to go. If you, if you would like to go, let Aaron know and we'll. Get another motion to to get you to go as well.
About it. Oh, okay.
He can still go without not being voted.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
But I think we need to approve the expenditure to have a go. You just let us know and we'll get, we'll put a motion on. Any questions? Can I get a show of hands to accept the motion? Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero. Alright, Superintendent.
So I just wanted to give you an update. As I said, the M C A S have been unembargoed as of noon today. And you will be getting some updates on our M C A S scores in the next uh two meetings from Principal Carrier and Principal Shorter. Um but I also wanted to let you know that in the school year twenty-three twenty-four. Um Desi plans to conduct a required field test of a new. M C A S Grade Eight Civics Assessment across all schools enrolling a grade eight student. So new grade eight civics um assessment starting this year. Also, M C A S test for Science and Technology in grades five and eight will be updated in the spring of twenty twenty seven. So we still have a couple of years to do that, but it's going to be a new innovative assessment with more focus on the doing. Science. I think um I met with Commissioner Riley with Dr. Sullivan last Friday. And we happened to be sitting two and three away from him. And we expressed our um opinions about the M C A S and how the M C A S is not a measure of how we teach, how we assess. Um and so I think what he's doing with this new test. I'm hoping that this is the direction they're going to be going when with the M C A S. Is a much more interactive instead of just sitting there by yourself, just. Answering questions, but much more problem-solving based, much more of the way we solve problems of the world. We don't just sit there. Do things in isolation. So fingers crossed that um we're going to see this more in math. Um and in reading, but I'm happy to say that I'm anxious to see this twenty twenty-six new innovative assessment. With the doing of science.
I am excited.
Aren't you though?
When do we do?
You know, they. They revise it every six years or so on. They've been saying they emphasize doing every year. It's hard to standardize that.
I know.
I applaud the idea. Let me see it and what it looks like.
When do, when do our kids take civics classes? Is it eighth grade? So are we?
Civics has known this has been coming.
Okay, so they're gonna front load.
We created a new civics course a few years ago when they, the, the standards changed. When the standards changed, they were like, hey, heads up, you're gonna get an M C A S test eventually.
Yeah.
So they civics knew what was coming. Um. I'm not surprised on science.
You're holding your breath to see. Right, thank Ted. Mr. Turmel, what do you got for us?
Couple of quick updates. Um Wally Computers will be here tomorrow, putting the switches in for the vape sensors. We hope that they are up and going. Uh fingers crossed, October one. Uh Principal Shorter and her uh admin team have a training with Ricata. Which is a company that will uh oversee the vape sensors, how to hit them, and it'll come off and get ready to go. Um.
And what are we doing when they go off? Do they go off like an alarm?
They can, yes. Yes. So there's different ways that that, there's different ways and different people that can be notified when, when something was off.
Your job is to let all of your friends know up in the hill that. The sensors are coming. This is a two-way street, this information.
I already, because they knew that they were coming, they were. They don't work it. I thought they were supposed to be in. Don't worry, guys. They're ready.
That's good.
They're working it.
Popularity.
This is where the bearer of bad news happens. Yeah, don't kill the message.
That's all right. The, the uh we have secured the two-hundred-thousand-dollar bond. Out of the F Y twenty-three capital for the paving uh project. Uh Mr. Whitecanner is working with Mr. Brown on bids, um and we'll look at that for the spring.
Okay, so now that they all left. Um so, so we're looking at doing repaving this summer.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, so if we lock that in and we need to do that, we don't need to prime. This parking spots at the end of the school year because they're gonna get ripped up and torn out anyway.
Right.
Fair enough. There's no sense in the junior class spending seven hundred dollars on priming when they're gonna have to prime. In the, in the fall.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
And one thing that we should look into before we make that a policy while I'm thinking about it. Is, is there a timeframe with regard to like, do you have to prime a certain length of time before you paint? And then like, does that expire? You know what I mean? So like you don't want to prime it too many months and it fades. So that's something that we need to look into when we create a procedure for this.
Sounds good.
Okay, um I think I mentioned last time about the uh underground tank.
Yes.
So we have uh Paco Time Bond. They are going to be the. Uh they've already sent us a scope of work in the design. We have partnered with them to do the first part and putting out the bids and then. Uh they will be the, the firm that we will use to um kind of manage the removal of, of the paint. So. Um that process is starting. I know we were concerned about getting that going right away, so that is actually, you signed the warrant tonight to get that going. As soon as possible. And lastly, uh. Mr. LeBlanc's plaque is up at the regional school, the guidance.
Oh, I saw that the other day.
Dedicated the, the guidance suite to Mr. LeBlanc last year and. The plaque that we ordered was, it's uh significant in weight and, and a couple of the maintenance guys did a really, really nice job of putting something together. So it is on and secure and looks, looks very nice up there. So I know. Uh his wife Paula is, is maybe listening tonight. I know she sometimes does, so she can go up and see it and uh. It looks very nice.
Fantastic. Super.
That's great.
Alright, subcommittees. So. We have some empty holes and now we are a full committee again. Um negotiations, we don't have anything up and going right now, but we have a hole on negotiations. Um we do not need to fill these all tonight, so Mr. Fox leads zone field. Um forced into going.
I don't hear the train running.
Yeah, and then I just want to go over what the openings are, but ideally. Anybody that wants to fill these holes, um if we could get a request to Aaron and myself. Um before our next meeting, I'd love for us to be able to kind of fill these and. And ideally, we have three people on the committees. Um so we've got negotiations, we're down one. Um finance, we're down one. Um. The LPVAC. We're meeting, yeah, the finance committee, we're meeting.
This Thursday?
Yeah, so if anybody wants to join finance, um Mr. Fox, um. No pressure, but no, if you wanted to join finance, we have a meeting on Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't want to push you, so.
Well, Kevin and I haven't locked horns in years.
Alright, so we got one, two. Anything from you tonight, Erica, for?
Uh the meeting is tomorrow. Anything I need to bring to them?
They don't know.
Yeah, I would say they, they did it. It took us a little time, but they did a really nice job with transportation.
They did.
Yeah, I mean.
Like in general?
Yeah, they were, oh, they're so, I mean, they took it on for this, this was really the first time they took on completely.
Yeah.
Softly, uh.
So like really did do the whole thing?
Well, they, but the planning of it, a lot of it was, was. Uh Mr. Presnell and and Karen did a lot of it and there were some.
Though the roots of a year is, I mean, with. Considering many towns with the geography of the spread.
We had some hiccups this summer with some communication, but it, it, it worked out from the start. And so I think they should. And they had a lot of new turnover themselves. That they have been, been dealing with the transportation environment. So I, I would just say.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay.
And we're just to double check that we're, we're. Everybody that wanted to get into. LPVAC got in, or for C-Tech got into C-Tech.
LPVAC tomorrow morning. I think that's one of my questions on my.
I, if that's not been clarified, I want to make sure. That we reclarify to whoever is now overseeing that, that I am. At least from my position on the corporation side. I would be extremely upset if an out-of-district outside of the collaborative has a student in. C-Tech and one of our students is put on the sideline.
That is the general consensus from the superintendents from LPVAC.
Very awesome. If you need support, you let us know.
I will.
Uh policy, we have an open hole on policy. If anybody wants to join Pam and I, you're more than welcome. It's a good old time. We serve ice cream.
Once a month, starting in November, right?
Yeah, buildings and grounds, uh we'll be having. We're gonna have a meeting. Are we gonna bring in our friend soon?
Uh, yeah, I can reach out to him again. I think it's been three weeks.
Let's see if we can get him on the, on the agenda and get a meeting.
Okay, okay.
So that way we don't, I don't want to wait. If he's ready to go, which I'm assuming he might be.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get moving. Um I L T, anything, you, you guys have a meeting or?
Okay.
Alright, that one's full. Um wellness.
November, I want to.
November, that one's full. Sped.
Nothing.
Nothing, uh technology.
Can you just mention something about that? Um we, I did talk to um Robin and I, I don't know if we talked about it in our COPE meeting, but we um want to. Use the sped liaisons, um just to keep you involved over the course of the year of what's happening. Again, pardon my budgeting goal. Keep you involved with. Not kids, but programs. Budgetary issues, what we're looking at, so that it's not something that we spring on you. At the end of the play budget season, that you're aware of it throughout the course of the year. So we're gonna be using those sped liaison positions a little bit differently, so we can plan having some, more gonna be like more budgetary meetings. And programmatic meetings, but just so you know.
Well, also related to that, um I noticed that at the mask conference, there's a workshop on the new I E P procedures. Because that's being revised and and there are kind of new, new forms that we actually fill out. Um so as liaison, I, I plan to, to attend that one. Kind of feel you guys.
Will she, will you or she be reaching out to us to maybe put something on the books in terms of?
Yes, we're having a meeting. Code, I told you just, oh, yeah, yeah, code. So we'll probably do it in like two weeks.
Uh technology, we have a hole if somebody wants to join that one. Um. Capital Committee. We've already filled, correct, Mr. Fox? You would like to put the spot for capital committee? I think we had a, a request come in from the, from the town. No, it's my, super duper. So Mr. Fox will be our capital committee representative. Um master plan. Right now, we don't have anybody. I don't know whether we necessarily need to fill that. I've been in contact with uh Mrs. Obregon over the summer. Looked at the proposal that they put together, gave her some comments. The next point is implementation. Uh it may be something that we, if we need it, we can add it, but I mean, unless somebody's. We, we. Because you're already on it, aren't you?
I am, yeah.
There you go, and he's on it, so he, he's on.
Any news?
The only thing is, in terms of implementation, I don't think they'll allow me on because I'm a student, but.
Yeah, but what if you're the school committee representative?
I'll do it.
Well, let, well, I don't even know whether that's an option, but let me, let me do some work.
Alright.
I'll see what's going on.
Fair enough.
You're telling me you're potentially open.
I'm open to it. If they'll let me, I don't know because I'm not eighteen. They, they tend to get a little bit.
Turn eighteen.
Next August, so it'll, it'll be for a while.
Yeah, I'm with on the, on this. I'm just, I'm just encouraged by your willingness to help out if, if it's an option. So let's, we'll see what we can do. Maybe we can make you an honorary school committee representative. Alright, um athletics, we. Had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We were discussing um limits on gifts and. Fundraising, things like that. I know that we're already getting, I've already hearing about uh captains. Uh gifts and stuff like that, so if we can maybe expedite getting that stuff out to the teams, because they're already talking about it now. Um.
So are we putting a kibosh on that?
No, no, not a kibosh, maybe a limit, because they, it gets a little, it gets a little crazy. Um. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars get sort of.
Have to take some kind of blast all the time about how you can't accept gifts over forty-nine ninety-nine. I was gonna say.
Yeah, so.
I was gonna say it's like fifty bucks.
Well, there, I mean, I think two items are. Coaches' gifts, I think we, we talked about a fifty-dollar limit um on that. The bigger issue is captains. Eric, like senior gifts.
Oh, senior. Getting hit up and getting hurt over and over again because she gave.
No, it, it's, it's. Well, soccer had more than that last year and, and you've got a blanket and a this and a that and it, it's, it's like, it's like a shower. Um.
And then you throw in the banquet fees and you just end up getting hit up like multiple, oh, I need, oh, I need this, oh, I need this.
There's just a way to do this. It is, honestly, it's almost like, oh, yeah, it's like, oh, I'm senior, so I did.
Senior.
Yeah, um legislative liaison, we just loaded Pam's gonna be that this year. Um. One of our visitors left, so our second public comment.
What division are we, by the way?
Division?
Yeah, like.
No, there's a thing, why do I want to say seven? It's not nine. I think you're like. It'll clearly identify on there. I can't remember. Liz, if Liz is listening, she's gonna be mad at me because I should know. Um but I don't, I can't remember. We're, it's five or above. It's not the lower ones.
Okay.
Um, okay. Well, I know, there's, there's ten of them. I know that, so I mean, we're not, we're not putting. See, there's five or seven, it's only.
It's in the five or seven. I couldn't remember. It's either five or seven, I couldn't remember myself.
Anything for old business? Um, new business, I've got one thing I just want to make a comment on, uh, based on a public comment we had tonight. Um, I did have an opportunity last week to speak to Ms. Clendenin. Um, she was communicating with Erica and. Um, I saw that she did have concern about the lunches. Um, and I reached out to her. Or actually, I asked Erica to see if she could call me, I had a very pleasant conversation with her. Um, based on that conversation, I, I reached out to Superintendent. Her and I both went to um, seventh and eighth grade lunch on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, we went on Friday. Um. It was. I didn't know what to expect, because I'd never seen it. Um, the eighth graders came in first, they all were able to come in. But they were. Class was over, they came in. They were able to all put their pin in, get their food in under three minutes. They all were all seated at tables in under four minutes. Um, the seventh graders that came in, um, before that, nobody. At the end of that lunch, had any. Issues finishing their lunch, uh, the teachers that were there were not ushering them out of the cla, out of, out of the lunchroom. They weren't telling them to throw food out. Um, the students, most, the, the, most of them were done by the ten minute mark. Um, I, they all went out, they all lined up, they were ready to go. And before they even left, the seventh graders were already coming in and they were all lined up at the door, waiting for the eighth graders to leave. Eighth graders left, seventh graders came in, they took three minutes and forty-two seconds to go through their pinning. Um, about a minute longer, the main reason and the culprit for that was probably ten or twelve of the kids did not remember their pin. So they had to look them up. They were in and out of there in under five minutes, they were all sitting down eating their lunch. Um. Again, nobody seemed to have any issues finishing their lunch. Um, towards the end of that fifteen minute mark, um, we did start to see some of the behaviors. There was broccoli that was getting thrown around at a table, um, all the kids were done, there was, there was nobody that I saw. That were having any issues eating. Um, at the end of that time, they all left, everything was fine, I did have a conversation with Principal Shorter. And Superintendent Willard about, look, if there are students that do have an issue that want, that need some extra time. Are you guys able to have conversations with the parents and create some sort of alternative option that makes it work? The answer I got was a resounding yes. Um, so from my perspective. At this point, I don't think this is really at our level. Um, I would highly suggest to any of the parents that signed. The concern letter that we have that we'll put into the minutes, um, if they do have any concerns or any questions. Please, please, follow the policy, reach out to the principal. She will have a discussion with them. Um, they are able to set up a solution for their child. If they're in eighth grade, they have the opportunity of staying a little later, if they're in seventh grade, they could bring them in earlier, so they have time to eat. Um, I do think it may be worth a conversation about. What kind of other alternatives they can do other than going outside, I know when it rains, they do certain things in the winter, obviously they're not going outside, I think that's a different topic. But I do think that may be something that the administration can look at, but that's something the administration should look at. Um, if they have any concerns. Please go to the principal, if that doesn't work. Superintendent Willard is there and is next on the pecking order to have a conversation with. And if that is still unresolved, then that's when somebody can come to us. Um, so at this point, like I said, I think this really is something that the administrative team is certainly. Able to address and deal with. Um, I certainly am appreciative of Mrs. Clendenin's um. Questions and concerns. Um, I'm glad we were able to speak with her, I'm glad we were able to look into this so quickly. Um, and at this point, I think really from our end, it's, it's, it's not really at our level. Somebody have any questions, comments?
Just a comment, um. Kelly Clendenin, she, she contacted me and. You had her reach out to you?
Yep.
And you were right up at that lunch the next day, I mean, I haven't seen faster response time ever, and so I, I, I'm good for you, I mean, thank you for doing. Yeah, and the only other thing I want to add is, right, and I, and I think it, it goes to the fact of, um. We had seventy-five percent of the seventh grade and eighth grade roughly participate. In hot lunch. We didn't have numbers like that. So this isn't just. A quarter of the class going through in that amount of time, we had seventy-five percent of the kids in the seventh and the eighth grade going through that line that quickly. And getting a hot meal, they are eating um, the food that we're getting for free from the federal government, we've never had.
And I mean. And I'd like to add that until the new salad bar went in, my own children never participated, but they are thrilled with the salad bar addition. And have gained a few participants thanks to the salad bar, and now they eat salad, they exactly, well.
That was apparently a little bit of an issue with the seventh and eighth grader the day before, it got a little uh, over juvenile and cross contaminated, so they had to. Change and adjust what they were doing, I think from what I got, that will be continually looked at to see if we can get them to the point where they can.
Well, there's a difference between how middle schoolers and high schoolers eat, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, um.
Man, they have hot breakfast now.
Yeah.
That's a great. Yeah.
So, um, anybody have any other comments on that?
Thank you for it.
Fantastic, alright, so at this point, I will then pay a motion to adjourn. Can I get a show of hands to? The motion, Aaron, let the record show the motion passes seven zero zero, good night, everybody, thank you for your time.